Meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to order. It's 6:01, June 16th. If you all join me in sluting flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we don't have any minutes tonight. We should have minutes.
Do you have yours?
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
It says TBD on here.
I know what your script says.
I just saw that. I just saw that. All right. I will entertain the motion to approve minutes for May 27th and executive session minutes from May 29th.
So moved. Second.
All right. Nothing? Ralph?
No. It's good to see them being caught up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 26 for $528,663.97. School warrant number 1102 for $117,634.42. The general fund school windows, 1103 for $19,610.10. General funds number 1104 for $302,245.16. CDBG projects 1105 for $11,775.3. Fire highway warrant 1106 for $259,330.37. And fire highway warrant number 1108 for $86.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some things on here that people are here for. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do those first. So if people need to leave, they can. First thing we have is, we have State Representative Donnie Bertham here to make a presentation.
Yes, we do.
Don't get rowdy.
Can you move the camera now? All right, Karen, come on. This is for you.
Oh, you were surprised with this?
They told me I had to be here, but they didn't say.
There you are.
So you had to be here. So, little story. So, for everybody that doesn't know, we have this thing in Massachusetts, Mass. Commission on the Status of Women, they do this thing called Commonwealth Heroin. So you pick somebody from your district. So we get each rep and each senator gets to pick one person. And the Commonwealth Heroin is somebody that goes above and beyond in their town and their community to help everybody as much as they can. So, this year, Donna, everybody knows Donna works for me, everybody knows Donna. So she said, "Do you have anybody in mind?" And I didn't. She goes, "I have somebody." And she mentioned you. So this is all surprise to you?
Yes. I thought I was in trouble.
Don't worry. So, the selectmate, so you don't even know you won this yet?
I knew I was going to Boston where nobody would know my name or face. I didn't know I was gonna be here, so.
Well, this is better, because that gets a little crowded down there. So Jason, the selectman, asked me to present this to you tonight, so that, you know, people from town, and we could see it on the TV, and because it does get a little crazy down there, that day, there's a couple hundred women all getting the same stuff in this one room that's not very big, so.
I mean, you could still go to Boston.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta go. It's absolutely a great ceremony. So, Donna, Jason asked me to come tonight so we could do this. Is part of your crew here? I know it's not just you. You guys?
No.
No?
No.
Well, so, she said that you wanted the whole crew to get in the war?
I did. When I first heard about the Boston recognition, I didn't feel comfortable, because it's not just me.
Nobody at Volunteers that does good things ever feels comfortable, and that's how it's supposed to be.
That's right.
It's amazing members, it's amazing volunteers that give their heart and soul every week. And without them, I can have ideas, but they wouldn't matter. And honestly, a special shout out to this town, which has been near and dear to my heart for 25 years. You know, you welcomed us with open arms, and you've supported us, whether it's canned goods, monetary donations, a pat on the back, a kind word. And it's because of the heart of North Brookfield and the people in it that volunteer every day, we're making a dent in food insecurity in our town and surrounding towns. So, it's an award for everybody. I'll stand here and I'll take it for you, and I appreciate it, I truly appreciate it. But it is.
Well, somebody has to be able to be here. You're obviously a leader on this, so that's why you're getting this. So it's for you and your work with Collaborative and all the other things you do, and this great group of people that you have working for you, you can be the messenger, bring that to them. So, on behalf of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, on first I do with the citation commemorating your Mass. Commissioner of Status of Women Commonwealth Heroin Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, see you in Boston.
All righty.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. This is a fun part of my job.
All right. Jamie, would you introduce your appointee?
Yes. Jamie Comeon, Superintendent of Water Department. After a couple of changeovers, not sick names, we found another wonderful candidate whose resume is just outstanding. The department and the board met with her last night. We think she's gonna be an excellent addition to our team up there at the Water Department. And we just come here to get your approval to hire her on.
I'm Lindsay. I don't think I met the other lady.
Sorry.
Lindsay Rockwood. Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
And I can put in a good word for her, too. I just, I just didn't realize this was happening.
Well, you know, that's better than Jamie's word.
Or.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Lindsay Rockwood to the Administrative Assistant of the Water Department.
Second.
All right, Jamie, can you tell us about yourself a little bit?
Sure, sure. I grew up in local Mass. Moved this way about seven years ago. I live in North Brookfield now, on Lee Flashway. I'm a horseback rider and a trainer. Do a little bit of CrossFit on the side. I like to volunteer. As Kathy knows, I have a big heart for Christmas. So I joined a Christmas committee this year. We had a blast setting up downtown, and I hope to continue doing that until she kicks me out. But yeah, that's what, I've been in municipal work for roughly 10 years collectively. I like serving the public, so I'm excited to take on this role.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Excellent.
I gotta tell you that at one time, because I was impressed with this, she was the interim superintendent of the Highway Department. This woman was the superintendent of the Highway Department in Brookfield for a while.
Kathy, my biggest fan. I did step up and play superintendent for six months in Brookfield during the winter, actually, so a lot of.
Oh, fun.
Blowing and assaulting and things. But yeah, it was, they found a great person now that would take on the permanent role, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Excited to be here.
All right. Let's see. There we go.
Thanks, Kathy. Appreciate your good work.
No, I don't think so.
Go back to the transfer request. Is that what you're gonna do?
Yep. All right, we have.
Are you gonna follow me and jump?
We are now, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you did that.
She's a little salty about it.
White and ugly. Wow. All right. So we have a spending request for Highway $2,557.44 to United Construction and Forestry. Two quotes were received to replace the cylinder piston for the backhoe. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request.
So moved.
So this is, this is different.
Yes, we had a backhoe, there was something with the backhoe back window at a different meeting.
Right. Second. Second. All right, now you can talk. All right. Thank you, Mary Beth. I'm good. Any more discussion? All right. Ralph?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a reserve fund request for the library, $1,307.62. Due to increased electricity costs, the fiscal year '25 budgeted amount did not cover all the invoices. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request, or reserve fund transfer. Second that, Ralph?
Second.
All right. Discussion. No?
I just had a comment. I think we locked into a lower rate for the coming fiscal year, so we should be better off.
Anything you guys can do about the electric spells?
No.
You don't wanna think about that a little bit, huh?
Oh my God, that's a mess right now, too. That's another discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next thing. That was it, right on the, bylaw enforcement discussion. We've been having people complain about various bylaws and how, whether or not they need to get enforced. For instance, you got vehicles that are close to the road, and we get calls all the time, and we need to get people to start enforcing those things. Lots of complaints, so, especially when there's profanities on those vehicles.
The light bulb just went off, and everybody said, "Oh, yes."
But there's other, there's other issues, too, that are out there, but we gotta figure out who's responsible for enforcing those. You know, because everybody passes the buck, you know, zoning enforcement, or the cops, or the, you know, no, talk to so-and-so, or, you know, whatever the case may be, or take them to court, is my favorite one, you know? But, you guys got anything you wanna add to that, or?
Yeah, so what exactly are we talking about?
Enforcing bylaws.
Enforcing bylaws.
Who's enforcing them? We don't know.
That's what we're talking about.
Who's in first?
Sorry, I could do this all night. All right, who's our options? The state.
Here we go.
Or Brandon.
I hate to do it nice.
I appreciate you.
He's not gonna go back. So, well, I think that depending on the particular bylaw.
Depends on the bylaw.
Would determine who enforces it.
That's one that's cited.
Zoning bylaws, people will tell you that the building inspector's the zoning enforcement guy.
Yep.
But then you got certain things that fall under the Board of Health, and the vehicles is one of those things that people say, "It's the Board of Health," and some people say, "It's the building inspector." Because he's the zoning enforcement officer, right? But then you have abandoned buildings, is that, that's the Board of Health, right?
Can I talk?
I hope so. Sounds like you can.
So, so why would that be a Board of Health thing?
Which one?
Why is that an health issue?
Which, which one?
I'm talking, you know where I'm talking.
Oh, the vehicles, too many vehicles too close to the road. I don't know.
Is that, is that?
Well, they're unregistered.
Brandon, sorry. Go ahead. Hold on, Brandon.
They're unregistered, right? So they're just sitting, so they're leaking stuff into the sewer system, aren't they? If they're just sitting.
If they're leaking.
Yep. Well, then that would be a more of a health issue.
How many cars are there? Because isn't the bylaw that you can't have more than two unregistered cars on your property at one time?
Well, I think it depends on how close they are to the property line.
Yeah, that's what it is. So you can have more than two unregistered vehicles as long as.
They can't be 50, they gotta be more.
The second one has to be 50 feet off the front, and I think like 150 off the, like, back lots and side lots.
Yeah, they just can't be, they can't be visible.
Yeah, you have to have a pretty big plot of land to keep that many unregistered vehicles.
Brandon?
Well, first have to separate the zoning bylaws from the general bylaws, so it's my understanding that if it comes under zoning bylaws, that's the zoning enforcement officer, which would be the building inspector. Now, general bylaws are a little bit fuzzy. We are working on updating the bylaws, so if you have suggestions you would like to put in there, who would be enforcing those, other than something that's clear, like the Board of Health or something? I mean, if you want the police to enforce them, or the selectboard, or whoever, you can send that to the committee and make suggestions.
Constable, perhaps.
Constable, yeah, whatever. Yep, so we can make those suggestions.
I mean, just for example, I happen to have a copy of my bylaws in here, and just one of the notes in here, and these have been adopted by the town years ago. The Board of Water Commissioners reserves the right to refer all matters. This is just one example of unmeted water service lines to the North Brookfield Police Department for unauthorized use of the water system. So I don't know if you just, as simple as that is.
Well, that's stealing, right?
Steff, yeah.
Yeah, steff.
Because that's stealing.
I could go to them, and be like, "Hey, stop it."
Does there need to be proper steps? Like, somebody has three cars that are unregistered on their property. Do you do a verbal warning and a written warning and a penalty, and then a fine after that?
Well.
Yeah, and the bylaws, it says all that, and the bylaws, there is stuff already in the bylaws, and it's like up to like $300 a day.
And we do enforce, and so who enforces that? That's what we're getting at, right? Police? Sounds like police to me, but on this, on this particular one that you cited, unregistered vehicles, I don't know how it can't be the police.
Did you ever run into that, Spencer?
So, we always did zoning stuff, was zoning enforcement officer, was the building inspector. If it's a health, public health hazard, it's the Board of Health, everything else is the cops. And they would do all the other stuff. Yeah. They don't like to do it, but.
We just, so we're really, so we're really just gonna get people to perform.
Do their job.
The uncomfortable part of their job, right?
Do you have an interim town administrator?
No.
No, so you guys are the boss right now.
Mary Beth. You heard her earlier, right?
So you can tell that from her attitude, obviously, she's a boss.
All right.
I like, I like the idea of keeping it simple like that.
Okay. Ralph?
No, it shouldn't be difficult. It should be pretty straightforward. Bylaws are bylaws, and.
It will be difficult if we're gonna talk about the vehicle that's right on the road that's got spray paint on it, that's not gonna be, you know?
It's life. Should've been addressed a long time ago.
Yeah.
And that's not the only one. I mean, there's plenty of yards that are just chock full of vehicles that don't need to be there.
Right.
Send them to a scrapyard, get some cash, or do something.
I, I wanna mention that there's a lot of bylaws in our downtown area that are being not held up. And we've got neon signs in windows that we're not supposed to have any neon signs in any of our windows. I know that there's a lot of bylaws that we have in our downtown area that are not being abided by.
Yep.
So I was curious just to hear the conversation.
Well, some of those things, we're working on changing bylaws to updating bylaws, right?
And that's fine, too.
So, so we gotta, we gotta look at all those issues, too, because some things, like, one of them was the drive-through at the bank, right? We're not supposed to have drive-throughs, but the bank has one, right?
And I would like it a little closer, because I have to open my door.
We don't have drive-throughs at the liquor stores.
So, so anyway, these are all things that we're looking at, and we needed to have, you know, to begin the discussion, right? So, that's why we're here tonight.
What about making like a bylaw enforcement officer in town?
We have one. We have a by, oh no, we have a zoning enforcement.
So, if it's a zoning, if it's a zoning bylaw, then we have an officer for it. If it's the Board of Health, there's an officer for it. And everybody else is, everything else, police officer.
Make it the car is a hazard, you can have the Board of Health control it, if it's a health hazard. It supersedes everything, I think, public health, right? Right, Brandon?
Brandon knows everything.
I would think so.
We haven't towed cars that have animals living on the side of the road, because it's a health hazard, so. I'm not an attorney, but.
Anyone on TV?
No.
Right now?
Nope.
All right. All right, so I guess we'll have to, we'll continue that discussion. Think about it some more. The bylaw committee, when do we see that?
Well, we're waiting for everybody's input to come in. We've sent letters to all the departments to see if anybody had any changes they wanted to make, so.
How much input have you had?
Not a whole lot.
Well, I feel like after tonight, you'll get some input.
Well, hopefully from the board.
Yeah.
Yep. And we're having a meeting on the 30th.
I don't care what time, you want it. All right. Anything else, Ralph?
No.
Jamie? Not yet. All right, Kathy?
Yeah, I do. Is this a session now? The two-minute session that you get?
Oh, no, 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 that's the end. All right. Park grant application sign-off. Do you have the original over there? The undersigned hereby certifies that they are authorized by the bylaws of North Brookfield acting in their official capacity as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen of said municipality and on behalf of said municipality to submit the foregoing application for a grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and hereby authorize that the person designated below as project manager to collaborate with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs on matters pertaining to the grant application. Wow. We wrote the grants for?
Yes, I wrote it. On your paper.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Look at that. That's why you're the boss.
The grant is the parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, and it's for improvements on the town common.
Okay.
Specifically for the basketball area.
Specifically?
Yes.
All right.
Specifically for that part of the common.
Perfect.
She's amazing. You better be nice to her, she's on top of things now.
I will entertain a motion to sign the application for the park grant for the common.
So moved.
Oh, that was a tie.
Second. I can see.
Discussion. All right. So, the area in the. You just said no. I didn't say no. I didn't say no. Go ahead. So, what, what do we, what's this in regards to the basketball area?
Do you recall the plan that was presented to the board that showed the concept of the renovated basketball area?
Now, would that include the pickleball area, too?
Pickleball, walking track.
So it was the layup room?
Yeah.
Okay. I remember. You gonna stay now, or are you still gonna move?
I'm leaving.
I saw your face light up when you heard pickleball.
Yeah. The walking track was Kathy, so she has to stay.
Okay, I'm good. You good? Yep, sure. Yep. Ralph?
I'm good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that's everything we have. Public comment period.
What's, what's all this? That was something that just came in the mail, so I.
Yeah, we talked about that before, that CMR-PC alternate, we gotta fill it out. I put that with you, wasn't it? CMR-PC alternate?
I wasn't happy that.
Yeah. All right, public comment period.
I have a public comment.
Only one.
Oh.
Yes, Sheila.
I have a public comment. I had my meeting last night for the Downtown Building Committee, and I've got some, I've got some people on there that have a really difficult time opening up the police door out here. It's super heavy, and I literally have, one of my staff has to call me inside to come out to open up the door for her. So, my public comment would be, is there a way that we can get like a handicap button on the police door for people to be able to come in? And I'm just sending it out into the universe that that might be a really great thing to have for people who are ADA compliant, because it's a hard, it's a very difficult door to open.
That's a good suggestion.
I told, I told my staff member that I would make that comment for her tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we'll look into it.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't know why that opens that hard.
It's terrible. I call it the zombie apocalypse door, because nothing's coming through that door.
Yeah, there should be adjustment on the, I think there is, yeah.
On that top.
Yeah. Kathy?
Okay, yes. I don't even know who the person is, and maybe it's Sheila. I, being a handicap person and having to use something to help me walk, I, I have difficulty, when you come out of the town hall, right on Main Street, crossing from Main Street over Summer, right in that area there on the sidewalk, there's a railing that you go downhill, you gotta go downhill to get that railing, and then the railing is so low, you can't get the railing. I've had to go out in the road, I've had to go out in the road and go around that to get, to go, to get to the, to where I can cross the street. I can't be the only handicap person that has an issue there. It's, for a handicap person, that's, it was pretty scary, actually. Kathy?
Don't put that in the minutes.
I'm sorry.
My virgin ears.
So, so, phase two or three?
Actually, I think it's supposed to get done this year.
Oh.
You're talking about the ramp where Viber, that goes from the park to Viber?
No, in front of the town hall building.
The old town hall.
Where it crosses Summer Street.
The corner of Summer and Main.
That dip right there.
Yeah, you know, exactly, yeah.
The town hall, right in the corner.
Oh, I took a, I took a good header there, I wonder if it was.
There's a little railing, but my God. I don't think we're fixing that part of the street until phase two, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Phase two or three?
Phase two. But that's, it's on the list, yes.[1733.12]
It's gotta be addressed.
Yes, we have it.
Yes. Well, you call Chet every day and make sure he, you ask him if it's done or not.
Once the state does it with their road project.
Karen?
Yes, the Collaborative has some exciting news. I know the last time we talked, we were talking about doing a farm stand for the Collaborative to bring their surplus for the community. And we had thought, you know, my heart was set on the little town park, and then we reevaluated more, and people came up with more ideas, and the Congregational Church has agreed to let us have it in their area, like right across from the Civil War Monument, which will be perfect, because people can drive right up, there's plenty of parking, and I think it'll be a great thing. So in saying that, I have, I think, promised my firstborn that I would I don't really like her anymore.
I don't like firstborns. I don't like my firstborns.
That I would maintain it. The Collaborative would make sure that, you know, we would periodically check whatever we put up there. If anything's going bad, we'll take it. If there's any trash, so not to inconvenience the Congregational Church. So we would like that anything that goes on there is just from the Collaborative. Because if other people start putting things, we're not gonna know.
Right.
And we're still fortunate enough to have Brooke and Tim Canada's free farm stand that people have been using through the years. So we're very excited about that. We're also in the works. Some lovely people have formed a committee. We're gonna be doing some free hot dogs for the seniors up at the Congregational Church. The little food truck, the little hot dog truck from Winter Street. The Collaborative had an abundance of hot dog rolls, so we did Let's Make a Deal. And we gave them the hot dog rolls, and they promised to give free hot dogs to, you know, seniors or anybody who's disabled. And so that's gonna be an exciting event coming up.
Nice.
So yeah, a lot of positive things going on.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any else?
Thank you, Sheila.
Did you have something?
No.
Brandon?
I would ask the board to kind of make this a regular thing, to announce that we do these with people on various committees until they're filled, because there are committees that are understaffed, stretched thin, and can only do so much. And then you get people complaining that things aren't done. Why isn't this getting done? Why aren't we doing things like this town does? You know, this, that, and the other things. So if people want to step up and volunteer and help out, they, you know, we welcome that, and it'd be really nice to see more people getting involved. And, you know, if you want to see things happen in towns, you have to have involvement. Otherwise, it's not gonna happen.
That's true. Anybody else?
We're chatting a little group tonight, I'm
How many are you looking for in Parks and Rec?
One to fill a very
Recently vacated
Forten role that was recently vacated, yes. Parks are ragged, but Downtown Development's looking for people.
How many do you need?
We probably need two or three.
Financing boards looking for people.
Finance committee?
Finance committee, no.
Collaborative is always looking for volunteers.
Yeah.
So you guys have the microphone, so
Alright. Ralph, you got it, huh?
No. Can we put together a list of open spots? Okay. And I'd like to review it next meeting, next meeting? Next panelizing meeting?
We'll do it all.
We'll do it all?
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Donnie, anything?
Is the town sign out on commission?
Yes.
The electronic one? I've had a couple of people ask me about that lately.
I don't know. Nobody told me.
It hasn't been in use, it's been black for the past
About two weeks, yeah.
We can have two weeks, though.
I don't
Okay.
Okay, looks like it's out of commission.
Alright.
Does that fall under a neon sign, too?
Actually, it did.
Well, there's your answer.
That's why I just
There's why you answered.
LEDs, LEDs.
That's LED, okay.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You didn't make the announcements.
Announcements.
Oh, I understand.
Good thing you
She gave you.
I literally typed what you needed to say.
It's not one of them.
Does your wife got this much trouble? That's all they want to know.
You don't want to know. So town offices will be closed Thursday, June 19th, in observance of the holiday. From from the Town Collector, quarter one and quarter two, real estate tax bills will be coming out for July 1st. The tax bills have been updated with our software upgrade, and both quarters will appear on one page now. Dog licenses are now passed due, and a $10 fee will be imposed. Please get your dogs licensed. The town has completed and submitted both the strap grant for sidewalk updates, as well as the municipal ADA improvement grant, the handicap grant, at the senior center. Currently, we are in the end steps of submitting our application for the park grant, which we just signed tonight. So, and then we are gonna be talking about bridge repairs upcoming, and and a summer program by the Council on Aging. Was there anything not written on there? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
I love that you're taking turns finally. Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.